Then in section two, we get the digit wide FTE data. So this slide right here is the enrollment projections. The way to read this slide, if you go left, right, it's our horrible data. If you go to the top left column, or left column, the top row, you'll see 2018, that's eight hundred and thirty-seven point five seven students in kindergarten.
Before you get into the details, can you describe what the difference is between method one, method two, and then the third variation that you had?
Yeah, so there's, I don't have these breakdowns. Now, one of these is FTE, one of these is hard count. So the head count is exactly what it is.
I thought method two was also the FTE data.
So there's one of them, uh, method one goes back to seven years, normal look. Number two is a two-year head count. None of them is not too bad.
Okay.
I don't have the data for that.
Okay.
So that, the method one is really a, goes back seven, to, to, to the point, go, to Gary's point, goes back seven years.
Okay.
And that's really for, that's really for us to use from a budgeting standpoint.
Okay.
So that's helpful for, for Dan and his team and our cabinet team. When we're looking at budget projections over time, we can make some assumptions based on that seven years, where the two-year really gives us an opportunity to look at, uh, from a facilities planning standpoint, as we look ahead, that allows us to, to plan facilities class.
It also takes on like the COVID years, uh, just to your projection, there are COVID calls around the end, what changes, what online, what's happening, so.
It's a great question, because that, it's one that I have to be refreshed on every year, too.
It's not before to break down, you know, what age group, especially, uh, we don't have that kind of, uh.
What is survival percentage mean?
So, great question. So the survival percentage, now really low, a hundred percent means that you're going back grade, going back class, maybe below a hundred people do this, so if you follow, uh, the top left row and column, eight hundred and thirty-seven point five seven students in 2018 kindergarten class, seven hundred kids. Uh, 2019, that class, kindergarten class or first grade class, sorry, ended grid, eight hundred and seventy-five students, so it grew by three point nine percent. So, I mean, overall, if you look at the fair district, it's great, because you don't see it drop to over a hundred percent too many times. Unfortunately, starting kindergarten class, which you're declined, so even though you're keeping the students who are growing that, that class size, the starting class size is smaller, because of the overall life force, so. You do see a few duck tick again in ninth grade, which was that, that station was good. Parents are recording house later life, but they're able to go to high school, pre-high school, uh, which is like, overall, more trying to come through, so. Once they're here, they, they put stay here, it's great news. Uh, if you look at the kindergarten class size, four, it's up to good students, twelve grade graduate, one thousand and forty-five students, four, four. Overall, we see that, that it's very, kind of, making the same amount to three new students per year. So, I drive around our model, must develop, it's pretty clear, right? If you go back to, I think it's fourth slide, you'll go back to, uh, the average family size in Troy, about two point six, so in order to make up that difference, well, in the future, because you need to go about three percent health a year, or a half, so. You're being, once it's, it's, you're going to be a most of health, or a half, so. But I do need to, uh, hold on, uh, health, health, but I don't think to the extent that we, uh, make it lower first.
It is about a hundred percent most of the time, barring that COVID year, twenty twenty, that's fine, you can ignore that, but I do notice a trend in eleventh and twelfth grade, where almost all the time it's below a hundred percent. Wondering why we lose kids between tenth and eleventh, and again, eleven through twelve.
There's a number of reasons, there's a number of reasons why you might see some type of high schools leaving, families leaving. Could, some of that could be private school, although you'll see our private school percentages remain fairly consistent, uh, over the course of, of years, so that would be one reason why you might, um, might just lose families as they, as they, as they move, and so forth.
That seems interesting that they will leave just for the last two years. Could it be CTE and other type of, uh, programs that?
As long as they stay in Troy, they're, they're Troy students.
So they would be part of the new?
So they'd be, they'd be part of our number, yeah.
Yeah, I think you look at some of the numbers, the, the actual number is not large. So if you're looking from twenty, if you're looking, uh, the absolute number, they're not always significant.
With twenty twenty-three, tenth graders, they have one thousand and four. Twenty twenty-four, eleventh graders now are nine hundred and eighty-eight, so, one thousand and four, this is not, we lost around twenty-eight.
Eighteen students. Three eighteen students between four high schools, that's, that's not a lot.
Because we have, because we have TCH and we have IA.
Yeah, that's what it is. And does this count as interest in?
Does it count?
As long as they, uh, as long as they are.
They are unless they potentially.
As long as they are Troy students, as long as they're enrolled in a, in a program.
Yeah, even if they're.
Even if they're, yes. Yes. Yeah. I think it's a lot in the district.
I don't know, but the absolute number is, that's. It's, it's just seems like for eleventh and twelfth, there's a trend, whereas others there isn't, I don't know.
And again, this trend is strange, and a lot of people should see that that, sort of, it's not necessarily about, not just the kind of, uh, so, um, trends, logistics, the rate, I mean, um, and the higher cash rates, survival percentage, um, so.
Do IA numbers count in there?
Yeah.
And if they, if they decide to go back to their home district, they're no longer ours?
Yeah.
Maybe that?
Yeah.
They don't, or they do?
They do.
Okay.
IA.
But if they leave IA and decide to go back to traditional high school, then some of those kids will go back to their, their natural kids.
They would.
This, huh?
Because there was very often a super deal happened when they leave IA, if they want to go, they were, they were being, uh, started, they were.
So they stay out students still?
Do you think that, they, and again, these aren't big numbers, but the majority of this, would you guys, we, 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 uh?
No, they would still be coming.
You know, there's. So I think.
No, I'm just, so if, uh, so if a student leaves, our district leaves TCH, it's, uh?
Correct.
Yeah.
If they were, if they went to Brad, either, you know, they would have thrown off, the red line.
Well, another district, yeah. Another, well, another district.
I do think it's.
Yeah, it's moving, okay.
Yeah, the average of around twenty kids looks like all the way through, not a big number, but a trend.
The survival percentage is over ten percent, is that what you're saying?
It's, yeah.
Got it, right.
So it's a private.
Okay.
Then the next slide just shows that, uh, it rolls up from grades, eight, five, uh, six through eight, and then twelve. So, you can follow, in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine, we expect that the rent has, for the high school itself, now, is going to go from three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine students, now to three thousand eight hundred and sixteen students, so. Uh, a huge decline from, uh, basically, uh, a little less amount of kids. The next slide shows a more graphical approach, just kind of showing that it is leveling off, it is declining, but again, we saw a drastic decline earlier, uh, pre-2018, so it is leveling off overall, very close. This slide nineteen goes about the two, which has actually, you look at, uh, it's less decline, but still less students, from what you were originally seeing, so. And that survival percentage, a lot of grade, really, is ninety-seven percent, uh, it's something, years, about ninety-eight point six percent, so this is showing that you're just changing a lot of the boys' students, uh, number.
What do you think the two-year look like, sorry, I don't?
So this just uses the, the previous two years enrollment production numbers, so it basically takes out, um, the COVID years, where it's just a lot of line or virtual vacancies, uh, districts, uh, will fight it. This just takes the last two years, sort of, that, sorry, enrollment, and then directs it out from there, versus taking the previous seven years. So method one, probably.
So I think what's confusing me is that both charts look exactly the same, so I can't be the only one that's confused by that. Um, they both go back to 2018, so when you say two-year look back, my assumption is, I'm looking at two years of data as opposed to, I'm still looking at more?
Yeah, no, that's a great point, so the data to the left is all of the stored data, but as far as projection from the right side, you'll have to, to twenty-three, so I, I.
So I think, so you, so my original question was very fair, because when I look at these two, and it wants this method one, method two FTE data, I can't tell from this that you're using only two years worth of numbers to project out, versus seven years worth of numbers to project out, so. Um, in any case, if this is going to be presented again, I would make that clear, that, that the projecting out is happening from twenty-three, twenty-four here, and method one is seven years out, just.
That's, that's certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks sound, but. Yeah, no, totally, and we can go back, I should add, what, if this, uh, this one, that, we're pretty sad for this, you know, but even if it's not a percentage, um, you have, something to know about.
Maybe a small slide that helps you explain what the different methods are and how you come up with these numbers, for me, how to explain that.
Okay. When, uh, with the projection, how, I think the next one, I have, uh, what is your, your prediction? Talk about.
Yeah.
The next one, uh, this is, this is, to show, like, do, and then to sort of how useful it is, so.
Oh, right, right. But that's short, but I don't think it's really that important.
Um, go to slide nineteen, again, this is just a different, uh, we're looking at, it's a three pattern compilation, eight, five, six, through eight, and then nine, twelve. Again, still a decline, this plus, decline, uh, going from the nine to twelve, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine students, now, about nine hundred and sixty-nine students, so, um, less than decline there, uh, a little bit more, but it's timing to come up to the eight-five, three pattern compilation, so, about seven, one student, another about four hundred and seventy-two, so. Again, this is, it goes back to, uh, my work data, defining why her, which number of less students, uh, or, yes, right. The final slide is the, the two FTE forecast, as far as, uh, the rest of the data, so you can see, it is pretty steady across the board, from twenty-five, twenty-nine, with respect to the eight-five, which is, uh, it's still a level off towards the end of twenty-eight, Um, some of the key takeaways, uh, survival cohort is strong in the district, um, like I mentioned a lot, you can see it overall, a hundred percent, it's great news, housing values are remaining strong, actually, growing in the districts. Life risk data is still declining, um, we don't see it being as drastic as it has been past, but it has got a certain point here and now, but it does a lot of additional plan for the future, and, you know, kind of, what, what the guidelines are as far as how these students spend. Um, I think, overall, uh, I think that the projection for lost students, not going to be out drastic in the future, but again, there are about two to three hundred kids per year in the next nine years, so it should level off here quite way in the next nine years, so. Any questions?
So next, next steps for you is, um, buying methods to actually give us all the numbers that we're used to.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll put together a final report, um, highlighting that the method, explains the different method approaches, and what conditions, which method makes most sense, um, and that, present all that, so. Thank you, everybody, for participating. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Dan, you want to move on? Any more comments or questions on this?
So the next item is the iPad purchase, so I'll go through the iPad purchase briefly, and then I will kind of give an update on, uh, the tech committee, kind of, this question was asked as part of that committee as well regarding student devices, so. Um, up for your consideration is a third and eighth grade iPad purchase refresh, so this will be brand-new iPads as well as cases, um, people cases included, so. The total is eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, um, total number of devices is nine thousand three hundred and fifty, so, almost two thousand devices have been purchased, so, these are typically readily available, um, just a matter of getting more approval, placing the order, and, uh, so, once these ones are put into service, it's typically a five-year lifespan on those devices. Um, Apple devices do have a pretty good, um, hold in their value, so we do then resell the other ones, and typically, on something like this, we can get, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, um, selling those old ones, and those months are then just put back into purchasing devices, or kind of recycle the money, so to speak, so, uh, any questions about, yeah, so purchase of those?
Can you respond, respond? You sell back, get back, uh, for the subscription, or that?
There's a portion that you're allowed to push back into the general fund, but we definitely try to push it back into what the bond was initially purchasing for, so it just gives a little bit more, just like, it just garners that bond, try to restrict it internally to that, even though according to state law, it's like, take a portion of that, uh.
And, and how do you do that, Dan? So right now, for example, it's eight hundred and forty thousand, and you may get about a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand back for selling, do those go back into the technology portion of the bond fund, or where do they go back? Anywhere in the bond?
Yeah, that's just our internal practice, we can just say, okay, exactly, here's probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand for the license, or any technician just would have had.
So it just goes back to the part that is technology?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And who do you, who do we resell?
There's, I can find the name of the company, but there are.
So you buy into a reseller, a refurbisher?
Yeah, it's not Apple that we sell them to, but they do buy them out, they kind of get a few different quotes, who wants to buy them, and then they make the greatest value that would be different, and then they come, dip them up, chit-chat, you're done. And then obviously, we wipe up the turn, and all that, just to make sure we can talk to them.
These nineteen hundred is for the entire?
Third and eighth grade.
Three to eight, oh.
Third and eighth grade, yes. Um, just pull up the names for the.
What are the years they could usually get new iPads? Is there like a K?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be based with third and eighth grade.
Third and?
Yeah. Now that we're moving to first, first, second, third, K, one, two, we'll be part of them.
Yeah.
So refreshes will be third and eighth grade.
Okay.
Yeah. Those third graders, assuming they're here in eighth grade, will be doing in eighth grade, after second grade, they'll be essentially two in ones, so that we can keep it the same.
So they keep it for four years?
Refresh schedule for five years.
Yeah, it's about that five-year mark, where they get swapped out.
Five, six, seven, oh, five.
So five, four, five. And then in regards, this question was asked at, uh, the technology committee, so we've had two meetings now, typically, we're shooting for one a month, um, to do those, so, we met right before spring break, um, with a, a group of administrators from all different levels throughout the district, um, some of the partners there as well, and, um, some people outside of the building administration as well, so we had our tech team, our security team, try to get some representation from, um, every aspect of the district, so. We had asked them the question of, are iPads the appropriate device for students still? Um, it was pretty unanimous, in saying, yes, it was, um, coming from a Chromebook district, that Chromebooks don't hold their value, they typically get two, maybe three years of life out of them, so you're repurchasing for almost the same price more frequently, um, so it did seem like a win-win in that sense, but from a usability standpoint, um, the iPad seems to meet all the needs across the, the district, so, um, there wasn't any pushback from the committee about switching from an iPad to a different device. Uh, the only conversation that we did kind of talk about was, at the secondary level, looking at MacBooks instead of the, the desktops that we have in the lab, and creating a system where students perhaps can check out a MacBook, so I know we have your book and a couple other classes that.
Publications.
Use, use the desktops, um, within a lab, so we had talked about whether or not it makes sense, um, to go that route, and say, I mean, here's a set of MacBooks, perhaps that you can check out as a student for that semester, and come to give you that much experience for work from home, do your homework at home, and not so relying on a physical desktop device, um, at the high school, so, um, that, that was definitely brought up, and, and seems to be a popular option of the tech committee, um, so that's something that our, our technology department will look at, um, as they look to replace those devices. In terms of, in terms of personal devices, uh, that was the primary focus for this committee right now, to really look at what are the, um, desired protocols for personal devices in the district, and so, um, elementary is a little easier to craft those policies, they all kind of have their own, uh, from each individual building, their own internal practice that still meets the, the district code of conduct, so, their group, the elementary group, combined all of their policies, formalized into one, um, so we do have that guideline, if you will, that's drafted for the elementary level. Secondary, we did discuss, that was a little bit more involved, because there's a lot more needs to consider, we need to look at allowing devices at certain times during the day, um, so, I know that the secondary group is going to look at drafting, so things that are hopefully will get that sometime in mid, late April, when we meet back with this group. The, the generalized thought from the committee thus far is, elementary level, there would be no devices allowed, um, at all, unless for medical reasons, if a student had a, a ambulance, or some sort of device on their wrist, that was not a necessary.
To not at all at school.
Correct, yep. Uh, and, and a lot of these do, I think, fall in line with what the state is looking at, too, um, in terms of their legislation that's been proposed, so, um, secondary level, sixth through eighth grade would be allowed before and after school, but not during the school day, from the beginning to end bell, and then, um, high school would be allowed only in between classes or at lunch, but nothing during instructional period. So, that's where we need to kind of work out some of the minor details, we're primarily at the secondary level, looking at how are they going to treat in-between class periods and lunch, is there any regulation there, uh, so, but that's the overall consensus of where we want to make the conversation, and then once the committee gets the finalized proposed policies, we would then review it, and then to get over to the code of conduct procedures, to try to formalize it, uh, but we want a consistent policy, you know, your code of conduct, your handbooks, work policies, which is a spring update as well, so.
Is there, I know that there was some talk of doing some piloting at the high school level, uh, in all the classrooms, of hanging the book bags at the front, phone lives in the book bag, there's no bags on the floor, is any of that happening right now?
Yes, yeah, under a track, there is.
Okay, how long has that been going on for?
Uh, they sold them shortly after, which are great, but they probably didn't really develop, right, so.
Okay. Any feedback yet, or is it still?
I haven't got, we haven't given them yet, I know the thing went up, and, um, you know, the combination for that is not just, uh, technology devices, but also, as a furniture in our classroom, um, having a little furniture, to move it, you have to, uh, and so we need to, and I, I don't think our teachers need to do that, and I have their question, is it the right kind of school, or the other decorations, when you're like, um, in the bathroom, so, they're gonna test out books first, they're like, those, most of them.
Books seem like a good, easy, non-expensive, non-furniture way.
Maybe it would be worth us setting up a couple of visits, so they can see some of that, pipe, that furniture as well, that we're piloting at track.
So is the intent then to, then survey those students, about, you know, how they feel about, you know, having access to their phones, is that positive, um, are they talking to each other more?
Yeah, I think, uh, it's, uh, it's very, uh, intention will be, uh, free, if they, with a, for, uh, instructional, or, uh, so, free, if they were, they, you know, so, all of our classrooms at Apple, for instance, have, uh, they have, uh, caddies, or, uh, public, their caddies, as you might recall, about the, telling, telling them, you have to apply, um, your, so many people want to put their phone into a little pot, and nobody else, um, so, last thought, so, we're trying to also ensure, I mean, can our teachers sometimes help us with that, or do they feel that they now take their phone from the child, so, this way you can have your own, leave it in your bag, your bag, if you're on the, for your, for the, not unlike you, do I, and, there, you can give it in your bag, um, so we're trying to figure out a rate of that, to go along.
Some more to come, definitely. And then in terms of devices, I think it was, um, pretty unanimous in that, from third grade through twelfth grade, it's a one-to-one model, with bringing, school provided devices home, if needed, and then kindergarten first and second grade would be more of a part-based model, where you have access one-to-one, but they wouldn't be required to take the class, they would just simply use that, um, as well.
Is there, like, a really uptick need, even in third grade, for the, the answer might be yes, but just, just seem like, how, how, how far in elementary school can, you know, can this be?
The elementary representation at the committee, um, did suggest that third grade doesn't sound quite right. We don't have, and that's, that's a good thought.
Because it's, because it's not a, like, no iPad one-on-one, it's, it's cool, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the one thing we did talk about was providing better, um, and just more detailed instructions to parents on how they can do the training right at home, so it is the only device that's here, and that's just, if you want to shut it off as a parent, how you can go in and establish a code, essentially to shut it off after a certain period of time, and then you need the code from a parent perspective, um, so more just training your parents on how to manage it at night.
Just the fact that iPad, or, you know, in that, that, kind of, you're kind of struggling, um, you're talking to, you know, the, uh, so, very, have to monitor, um, or
Yeah, and the, the other thing we talked about, too, is like, the number of applications on a hot device, and reducing the number, and make it very targeted to these, this, this, and the cats, um, and then they can put restrictions on certain applications from the district level, that would say, like, after this time, these apps are shut off, and then they just don't work, so, that was, uh, we're trying to reduce, and make it more targeted in terms of what the students have.
Like, you need Schoology, and you might need a math app, but.
But YouTube, or Procreate, the drawing app, whatever it is, those might be essentially removed or shut off in your, your.
I wonder if they may consider getting some parents?
Yeah, we have the anxious generation feedback, that was, um, considered as part of this process, but, um, we are working on developing some type of survey that we could solicit, uh, feedback from students, from staff, and then anything else that we may need from a parent perspective as well.
Great, any, any other comments on this, or shall we move on to transportation?
So Dan's gonna get, uh, the folks from school bus, logistics, they're gonna, teams in with us here.
Oh, they're teaming?
Yeah, they're teaming.
Using technology?
I think, are they in Florida?
One's in Chicago, one in New York.
Chicago, yeah. Chicago, yeah.
This was not part of the.
No, but I will have it uploaded down.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Yep, I can hear you.
Hello.
All right, so I'm Ken Willems with School Bus Logistics. I'm your route logistics consultant for this project. We also have Megan Snared, who is the director of route logistics. Dan had asked us to put together a few slides just to show a breakdown of where we're at on the project and hopefully get some feedback from you. And for the sake of the call, I'm actually going to turn off my video to save some bandwidth here, so hopefully it'll keep up with us better. All right, so for the challenges and objectives, challenges, we have, the high school tier currently is too early. After-school athletics, we want to prioritize getting there on time for those athletics along with keeping in mind ridership is slightly higher than typical at 80%. So the tiering structure is currently within a 30-minute window. Our objectives, we wanted to focus on regular education routing. We wanted to modify the tiering to accommodate the later start/end time for high school routes and minimize the need for any additional vehicles. For this, we've come up with three scenarios. Scenario A, you're going to see 39 vehicles with five-tier system. Scenario B, 43 vehicles with five-tier system. And scenario C, 56 vehicles with two tiers. And it's a hybrid tiering system, so we'll talk more about scenario C in detail later on. But for scenario A, you can see that we move the high schools to that middle tier, which puts your middle schools at your first and second tiers and keeps your elementaries at the fourth and fifth tiers. Scenario B, we move the high school to the middle tier. Again, same as scenario as A, except this time we swapped the elementary schools and the middle schools. So the elementary schools will be the first and second and your middle schools will be the fourth and fifth tiers. And then finally with scenario C, we looked at combining the high school and middle school on buses at the same time. First pickups and drop-offs will be for the middle schools and then proceeding on to the high schools. So your current tiering structure is as such. Your high school is coming in first, your Larson, your second tier, Larson-Boothland. Baker-Smith, your third tier, and then your elementary schools, your fourth and fifth tiers. That brings you to third to regular education buses on a five-tier system. So scenario eight, here's the breakdown we have. So you can see the middle schools were put first. Your high schools are your middle tier and then your elementary schools last. And what we're coming up with right now is 39 regular education videos, or regular education vehicles. For scenario B, still on a five-tier system, just swapping the elementaries and middle schools again. This would yield about 43 regular education vehicles just due to that timing and pairing options. And then scenario C, this is slightly confusing, but if you look at the light pink first and then the dark pink, that will show you how they are combined. So we have Larson Middle School, Baker Middle School, Athens High School on the bus at the same time, dropping first at the middle schools at 7:30, then at the high school at 8 o'clock. And then your tier four elementaries would come after that. It should be a single tier on that. Everything is planned to run for those combos first and then your elementary schools second, which would be your two-tier hybrid system. That would give us a total of 56 regular education vehicles. And a couple of things to note on this, the combination of schools is going to have a higher load currently on your run. The eligible load for those come between 40 to 96 students. And keeping in mind that ridership that we were talking about before, if we're expecting 80% on the high schools and we're pretty much full with the elementary schools, this could pose an issue. So that's just something to keep in mind. So sitting two to a seat, oh, sitting two to a seat, you'll get 56. Sitting three to a seat, that's where you're getting the 77 passenger. I'll show you another graphic that breaks that down as well. Here's where I was talking about the revised scenario C. So what we planned on with scenario C that we've been working on is combining them and bringing them there within a staggered time. There's still actually a delay of 20 minutes between the drop-offs at the schools. We were using the bell schedule that's already in the system, so we might need to look into that and revise that. But the revised is actually into a four-tier hybrid system where we stagger the middle school and the high school combinations. So the first group would come in at 7 o'clock, then your next group would come in at 8 o'clock and then half hour afterwards to the high schools. Now that's still keeping the students on the bus because at the same time as well. So you're still dealing with the higher load counts, the eligible load count between 40 and 96. And then the tier four is actually going to have to push to 9:30. So that's a half hour later than it currently is as well. So working with those factors, we haven't actually done any planning on this revised. One of the purposes of this call was actually to get your feedback on if that's something we want to look into as we're coming to the close of this project. So depending on how we want to spend the rest of the time. All right, so going into the layout of us, this shows you the breakdown of the different types. So you can see your 52 would be your 78 passengers. Before passengers, you'd be able to get 56 on there, but I understand there's only about three or four vehicles that we can use that actually have that capacity. So right now with how we've planned things with the combination of routes, we're at 24 shared buses. If you're strictly looking at the student counts and divided by how many passengers can fit on those buses, you're looking between 21 to 31 buses minimum. For the THS Gulon and Smith combos, we're looking at 34 to 50. And with that, we're looking at 37 shared routes, just currently what we have planned. So based on eligible riders, this is the breakdown for current and what we've done so far. Current year, you've got five tiers, 32 vehicles, regular education. And labor hours, you're looking at about 163 with mileage about 110, 1100 to 1200. So scenario A and B, we only made modifications to the fleet schedule. We've used the existing routes as is. So we've used the five-tier system on both scenarios with the different switching of the elementaries and middle schools. We turned out 39 on scenario A. Scenario B, we had 43. Scenario A, labor and miles, we had 197 and same number of miles because it is your existing routes already. With scenario B, we had 215 labor hours with same mileage because it's the same routes. And then your scenario C, we had 181 and about 1,400 miles with that eligible load between 40 to 96. And, I'm sorry, was there a question? Okay. So scenario C, if we did look into this option, we're looking at roughly 37 estimated vehicles. We have not done any planning on that, so I can't give you the figures at that time, at this time. But we're still planning on that eligible load of 40 to 96. So that's currently where we stand. Did anyone have any questions on any of the graphics or do we need to revisit anything?
We need time to observe.
I guess of course, Scott, I'm seeing it.
I'm not sure I understand the C alternative. Does that mean because you have middle school and the high schoolers on the same bus, that a high schooler may have to get on the bus at 10:00 even though school doesn't start till 8?
Yep.
Yeah, that defeats our purpose.
So you saw them on the revised? All right, so the plan would be to stagger. The original plan that we have in the system right now is not staggered. It was planning on having all those combinations come into the schools at the same time, which pushed those bus count higher. If we do stagger them, we'll be able to reduce the number of buses that are on the road at the same time. So you're looking at tier two with your highest count, so 37. Those 37 would pair with the 24 combinations. And then afterwards, your elementary schools, which is, the most is 30. So within 37, like I said, that is just an estimate. Once we start looking into the routes and if they actually can pair together, that count could increase, but I'm not expecting it to increase if it does have to be pushed up.
I think the concern was like if you look at Athens, they would be picked up at 7:30.
They would have dropped off at 7:30 and their school doesn't start until 8:17. That's like 45 minutes of deadline.
Well, that's one year alive, but they could be picked up at 10:00 to 7:00, which doesn't.
So I think the question is in these different scenarios, right? What are the pickup times now, especially for the high schoolers? What time do they typically get there? And then compared to this, because the fact that school's starting later, but they're still at the bus at the same time defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Right. I agree, you just brought something up. I did notice that we did not change the bell times for the revised scenario. It's just something that we were trying to throw around. So we were playing with the AM arrival, the earliest time, and the PM departure times. We did not figure in the bell factor schedule on that. That's more work that will have to be looked into. But strictly basing off the AM arrival, PM departs, those were the columns that we focused on for the revised plan. For scenario C, you could see that all of those are the same. And then if we go to revised, we just did not update that. I'm sorry, that is my fault.
So are you saying by mistake you still have 8:17 as the bell time for Athens? In fact, it's going to be 7:40 something? Is that what you're saying?
So if we look at the bell schedule here, the 7:52, 7:52 and the 8:17 time, those are the correct times, but we need to stagger the revised plan, so that would actually push those later. So based off the arrival time, if you look at this, 7:30 and 8 o'clock, we have 7:30, or 7 o'clock, 7:30, and then 8 and 8:30. So we did the work on the AM and the PM depart, but we just need to tweak the bell schedule so that way it makes more sense. It's not going to act, it got much of a lighter time, it'll be adjusted.
Right, but I think we're more concerned about the arrival time.
We're more concerned about the arrival time, yeah.
Arrival time. So Athens is still too early.
And it, well, it sits at school for 40 minutes. So it doesn't make any sense.
That's the whole point, right? So we're right for doing all this.
Let's ignore that revised plan for right now. Let's focus on what we're talking about for the, the two different tiers, the 7:30 and the 8 o'clock, because you can see the 7:30 to 7:52 time, that makes sense. You got 22 minutes between the arrival and the bell time. For the high schools, you would have 8 o'clock to 8:17. You got 17 minutes between the arrive and the bell time. So if that was going to be adjusted, it would be 7 o'clock with, oh, is that 22 minutes? So 7:22 would be the AM bell time. From 7:30, it would be. Correct, 7:52.
But is it, but for the high school, would a kid in theory be on a bus for 40 minutes?
So.
Provide options so you can understand like you could do that with not a viable option.
Because our guideline is kids should be on a bus more than 30 minutes.
30 minutes is math.
And likewise, that would be optional, but first they don't have to be a lot of words, but.
Right.
Have we ever looked at scenarios like kids get picked up and dropped off at individual elementary schools and then a different bus takes them to middle and high school? You know? That was, those are the type of scenarios that we, I thought we would kind of look at. Like neighborhood nodes where there's smaller buses that get picked up in all the neighborhoods, dropped off at an elementary school. We have 12 elementary schools, then the buses just take them to.
You're saying a block to the elementary school, one bus to the high school.
Something like that, yes. I mean, alternate options like that to make it possible.
So if we did explore that scenario, the closest home school, which would be an elementary, middle school, high school, whatever you're talking about, what type of walking distance would you want to implement? Is, are you at a one mile, one and a half mile right now?
High school is at a one and a half mile. And most of our home schools are that, all of what we've walked into, running and cracking. We can utilize our small buses to get those students that want to.
So essentially, we'd be leading the elementary schools the same and then looking at doing transfer, our shuttles between the high schools or the middle schools. Okay. That's not one of the scenarios we have already planned, but we can start looking into that.
Yeah, and I think that was the point of kind of presenting this of looking at what we currently have, how can we try to make it work to each obstacle. But if you want to have some more transport, where we would shift, kind of like transportation would help.
I was thinking this whole consulting was to get such alternate, outside-the-box thinking instead of just looking at a firm or a lot and getting what you can.
I mean, there are added costs in all of these.
All of these cost more money.
Would you just want the high school to then look at the high school being dropped in the elementary because the high school costs three roads and those schools can't see what you're talking for? You know, they're used to having bus stops within their locations, so they're subject. So the high schools would probably be your kind of option, go to the elementarys because they're already used to walking.
I see what you're saying, right? My goodness.
They're not going to do that. No, can we do that? Sure, we could do that, but. I mean, we can, we certainly look at that option. We have arguments now with when we move a staff from two driveways over. You're talking about your staff now is a mile over here. That's two hours walk. Oh, yeah.
They don't want to be able to stop here.
But my, but my point of view is when we have those options is to go back to the families and say, we can get you a later start time, but this is, but this is, this is, this is what that means. So do you value the later start time and are you okay with what it requires to get there? Because if, you know, at some point, we have to, I think we have to go back to the, to the families and say, you know, with these restrictions, it's hard to get bus drivers, costs, you know, all of these things. We can do this in one of, you know, one or two scenarios where we can deliver this, but that is what this means. And are you willing to accept this trade-off to get later start times? And families either are or are not, you know? And I think, I think at that point is, you know, I think we have to try and say that we can, we can deliver, but this is what this means.
That's right.
I, I did double check that. It is actually thirty-two excluding that TCC route. So, thirty-two.
So, for scenario A, you've got the cost of five hundred, the time of, uh, drivers. Exactly, there are hours in your schedule, the amount of people you can hire. So, we wouldn't deal with some of those issues of...
Losing drivers.
Yeah. Okay. And then...
We'll increase the labor hours too. No, what we, scenario A is basically what we have in mind.
Just flip the...
Yeah, flip it. So, the hours that have more labor, it's like, uh, right.
Seven fifty-two, ninety-seven hours.
So, more bus, more, more...
Yes. More bus, more bus, more drivers.
For the driver's day, I expect she was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's...
Right, yeah.
So, from a cost scenario, we're looking at scenario A, cost factor. Yeah.
So, in this scenario A, of course, the kids have to pick up, all of the middle school kids, but more than that, two PM get off, parents don't get home that early. Many of the parents are working. And I don't know if seniors can stay on their own at home.
So, Vitale, just so you know, scenario A, what you have is Baker and Smith. That is what Larson and Bowlen are at. So, Bowlen and Larson start at seven fifty-two, get out at two forty.
Two forty, yeah, but this is, gets out at two forty.
It seems like everything for middle schools going back.
Yeah, but half of the kids are, are, half of the kids are already at, at that time already, yeah. I don't know that there's a big difference between two-ten and two-forty. It is, they're both in the middle of the workday. So, I don't know that that's necessarily a significant enough...
To be over, I think they would go later. Some are already down, although they have to...
A little early, yeah.
Unless we're going to go to a tier three system, which is probably not a practical solution in this, in 2025, for, you know, all sorts of...
But to me, that's still saying that, you know, if scenario A and then another scenario, whether it's a load system or whatever, you know, figuring out what the one or two are and saying is, we can deliver later, high school start, you know. Scenario A financially and labor-wise might, you know, seem like it would work. This is what it would mean, you know? Is this, okay, at the end of the day, the elementary schools are pretty much starting at the same, they're starting at the same time they are now. The middle schools will be starting earlier. But Baker and Smith will then just be where Bowlen and Larson have been forever. So, but, but I think it's fair to go to families and say, is this, you know, an acceptable solution?
And I think one of the things you were talking about with this was, much like our A, our C, what is the least disruptive option, the lowest possible, the impossible. We can go down the road, but we haven't no base on that. So, it may affect their hours, or their down streaming. That's why we did look at that option just yet, but wanted to try to keep this as possible. But also, we just want to keep that industry as possible.
I have to say, like, gut reaction, the idea of having a sixth grader and a senior on a bus together just to me seems like, I mean, they're just two different worlds. There are, one is about to go off to college and is an adult, and the other is like barely within puberty. Like, I just, that to me doesn't, I don't know that that's a, that's a, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
With you, I'm just, you know, pointing that out again, that putting those two group kids on the bus at the same time, we're trying to keep the buses as small as possible or less loaded as possible. You're looking at, you know, possible overcrowding issue. So, maybe it is not the best option. It's for you guys to decide, but just wanted you to know that that was set at eighty as a planned load count for the number of buses that we provided.
I mean, in the case, scenario C takes you from thirty-two buses to fifty-six. I mean, that's a, and then scenario C revised, you know, if the numbers are somewhat correct, then Athens kids are going to be at school pretty much at the same time as they are now. And that's not...
We didn't say that neither the C, who say the high school, but then he said, you know, still has done the bus early. Do we know the, um, more detail about our, our, our...
Well, just... Anything to change about this monitoring? Like, if you were seeing here, you just... Yeah. Yeah. You know what, I had to change.
We have a lot of logistic areas where they don't get their lessons till eight. And we have the ridership, a lot harder, how much is required, I, so I know, I could want to start like yours.
And if they didn't have them, they'd love to ride.
Like, now, now the ridership of high schools. I really want to route to the, of the bus and the boat. I guess, but I ain't going there. You know, high school. Do you track with... We do do ridership, and we do ridership, we do it count day. It's for all those schools, but they do it in order. Statistically, every, like during March, March, I mean, during, right, because there's no sports events, I do it at PM for a better idea of my ridership. I mean, I did hear that, that, who, last year's data. This year, I did do it, because we're doing this whole scenario, but we had last year's data from our ridership.
Okay, good, so we have, we have that. You have data.
So, if, if there's an option where that you, like, uh, goes further, or if you can, if you create some options now, um, or if you want to have a no base system, you know, base...
I mean, scenario B is potentially viable, so I don't know if elementary parents would want that. But, but in any case, it's still additional buses, additional hours, and then that's...
Me personally is the only one that's close to even thinking.
I think we should look at the YouTube, but, hey, sorry.
Being for all elementarys to start at seven AM?
Yeah. Well, and then they get out really early, so...
And they get out at two oh eight.
I could see care. You know, going up a lot, we don't have room.
And we don't, we don't have enough people for care. We can't accommodate there.
So, either bus drivers are cool.
Yeah.
Neither. That's where we are right now.
In, in order to just remove a, any potential question, looking at a, a new system or a main road pickup system, just so anyone would ask what to say, we, we investigated that as well, and this is what we've done. So, these, so these are really, from our perspective, the best couple of options that keep in mind cost and viability.
So, I think scenario A is probably one we, you know, didn't want to get more information on. So, what the numbers look like. Yeah, it's more buses, but, you know, what does all of that mean in terms of...
Yeah, that's really, we know that they were driving, obviously, specifically. If there was a, I thought was, I, um, compared to what they're supposed to. This first year is, we have our major next year.
But I do think it's fair to look at a node or, you know, just to see what that would...
Yeah, that was my understanding too. I was thinking we would get something, one scenario, a place like that.
And no base. And I think since we're doing all of this, then we should do that. And then, and then see how to, and then see what we take to the community and say, you know, is, this is how we can make this work.
So, would you, would you, that like, you're not helping apply to my direction as well?
I just, yeah, C, I definitely can't see, you know, our middle schools and high schools on a bus together. B just doesn't, um, I, I do think it will cause huge issues with care for small...
We need more, more drivers.
Yeah.
And then we can't get enough providers. Yeah, right.
Then more costs.
I guess we go with A and then like a node, something that's a little bit more...
Um, starting to get to know these options, the impossible. Um, I don't know if there, if, like, how that was, um, compared to, um, the, um, student, um, kind of... See, that's how I would generate these, you know, one question. Do you need to say with, more be like, I'm driving a lot, I'm like, I'm like, especially if I'm a freshman, I don't, I don't understand, so, definitely, I don't know. You know, the way that I want to drop off.
No, 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 no.
I'd rather drop the bus stop, that's crowded, and I don't want to just do it, but, I'm like... Okay, I'm saying like the high school students, we're sending them to an elementary, you already do a lot for, for the high school.
You may end up having some that I assume, yeah.
But I, I think we should leave the idea of a node open to let you guys. And I don't think at this point that we should directly get that node to be a, I think we should say, we want to look at node or maybe some iteration of the node, but you let it look at where that might lead.
Yeah. If it's not an elementary school, it's the entrance of an entire subdivision. Maybe that is your node. Whatever it is that works.
I know we look at the color, but we just kind of, as a, kind of a node basis.
But let's look at it, that we're, we're now doing this, so we might as well just do it.
And elementary school may not be an option, because elementary school is right in the middle of our entire square miles usually.
Or it's in a subdivision.
Or inside a subdivision. But if it's at the beginning of each individual complex, like, that may be easier for us to ask. Um, because everybody can't really, it's at the beginning of the road, potentially. An option. A lot of options. You don't know that, where that is.
That is an option, just something to note as well. I, I know what past districts I've worked with, they've had issues with students standing on corners, potential destruction of property, just because of walking on the grass, or it, it could cause some issues. I just wanted to bring that up.
So, what...
Sorry, I'll put a note just at the elementary schools. What, do you have a total amount of students that you, like a threshold, you wouldn't want to go over that are congregating at the elementary school at one time?
I don't know that, I don't know if we know the answer. And again, it doesn't have to be the elementarys.
Exactly.
Well, I don't reckon we'd want them at the elementary school in the school session. Would that make a difference?
It would be private, started elementary, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's your fault anyway.
But then this chaos, we try to...
Yeah, and maybe it's not a school, maybe it's a, whatever.
So, what do you see as, um, on the timeline after, sort of, that's get up?
I mean, a, a note, um, because people are probably, would think, well, that's, you have to look at where all, I didn't, here, right, well, since place, um, period, district, um, and, um, how long that needs to...
You're probably looking anywhere between two to four weeks, honestly. That's the planning.
I think, I think that's a, I think... We'll have to look at, I mean, right now, the main workshop. There's like, right, everything's on the main workshop.
So, maybe, maybe July workshop, maybe.
Or was it the other day?
Yeah, okay.
How that, that works out. Yeah, and they have that one.
But if, but if that information's there, it can also be, it can be sent to us. And then that way, we can, you know, come back and, with any questions, and think about it.
One thing I think, that, that's, I think, a, a point I think I'd like to point out, which is that, uh, more kids, uh, protected by, our, our capabilities more, so, so, anything that's happening with, uh, we, we're, we're, uh, setting up, uh, that, just...
What is it?
Well, there are more kids, more...
Mistakes.
Potential...
Yeah, that's what they were saying.
That's a work on a man.
So, maybe they are. So, just looking at things time-wise practically, if, if we were to implement anything for September, how much of a lead time does your team need to make that happen? I, I mean, I mean, it's...
It would be like, you have to explore, like, March, you know, you're, you're, you know, they have to hire a lot of driving, you know, many drivers, usually, that might have to be, you know, as you are in the sixteen, um, you know, the, 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 where, uh, the, uh...
So, it's already too late for twenty-five, twenty-six. So, it's going to be for...
So, then in that case, we might as well review everything and, because it's not going to make a difference at this point, so, for next year.
We'll circle back to that, um, we should have a thing, right? Did you report that?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, we've got a lot of big issues. And then we can get a survey out to parents early October, like, instead of, this is the year, early October. And then, you know, before March, you should have an answer of what we are, we're not, you know, not doing.
I rely a few of the parents.
I don't know if this will have any impact with the whole, whole department, to Smith, and the timing. You may have an effect as well.
But maybe doing this a couple of times.
Yes, a couple of iterations of the, it's the additional drop.
All right, well, great, thank you.
Megan, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you joining.
Just as a quick summary, so we were actually saying scenario A would be viable. Were we saying B was still viable or no?
No.
Okay. And then C, we're not going to pursue. And then I'm going to call it D, is our new help transfer type situation. All right. All right, sounds good.
Out of the box, they can, they're open as well.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great night.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Gavin.
Autonomous vehicles?
Anything else for Dan while he's up?
Well, we're going to do Smith, middle school, high...
So, this is just, um, four or five percent. So, no current traffic law, just, uh, just, uh, highlighting, this is part of, um, um, to...
Here's Janet, we have a group, right, so we have, um, so, we have, um, so, we have, um, so, we have, um, um, so, we have to, during the, during the, about eleven, um, who volunteered for, um, to learn and study in different ways of teaching and learning, and, 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 and so, the worst that has been, I'm learning, uh, um, for sure, that we will, in, in, so, it's, 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 like, the, 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 um, person, you know, that's, that's, really, a lot of, um, that's, 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 really, it's, it's, it's... So we just go to the front end, but because we have a great experience, we have a lot of people and clients that hold it. So we were lucky by our experience to be able to, they were able to do different kinds of jobs. So various people are willing to be at our entry. Learn a lot from the elementary school, but they highlighted their first time in the public school. And so these four highlight pages, being different kind of areas to, you know, get after the whole gap in the midst. And I think there is that basically, you know, it's happened there for the after. The great news is, you would like to be able to keep that title, which are access to sites. Go to that, go to the goal, go to the, you know, your needs and stuff. So this is a general, a company that both have, has been brought. We're intentionally, we're mighty, classroom differently, so we can test it by different spaces. We've actually given a partnership with different providers who are, you know, the best space to try to, to, to. How should we be different?
How old is the furniture right now at Smith?
Well, currently with the new furniture, the old floor five, that was maybe not a classroom classroom. So we were saying all of the floor five of master's.
Fourth graders and fifth grade furniture.
And that furniture was like a history of, um.
Yeah.
Earlier than that or later?
The fourth and fifth grade, just per your knowledge of fourth and fifth grade furniture, maybe has the need to satisfy that you need to have then for a second, you know, at Marston, one of the time factors of Holden's that all of that in combination to it to the death tier, and now we're able to share that in the country. That's happened. Detroit High is very large for, so we're, we're, so we're, so. So we're really moving away from the, the attached, the, 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 the providers. The providers use it on the, on the, on the.
Is the goal eventually after Smith highlights and then Baker is like, Holden Park uses it and Larson uses it, that it gets moved to another school? Is that the plan or is it?
Okay, anything else on this? All right. Thank you, Dan. Um, let me just do a time check here. We're down to other. Do you want me to take a break now or do you think our other will be?
I think it's likely a great.
Okay. This is attendance area. Okay. So we will move on to the attendance area. Kendra, can you?
Yeah. Kendra can join us. As you know, we have our additional meeting next week. So that is scheduled. The, as promised, the information is currently being compiled for a survey. So Kend, do you want to talk about where we are with the survey and what our timeline is?
Sure. So what we've done is we've been getting the results from the community surveys and we've set it down. So we're compiling questions based on the survey. While we're working to compile some of the additional that were asked in the first, are you to that now? I'm sure at that stage and then plus we sort of go through my team, sort of goes with that. Then Kend will do the questions and add those based on feedback that anyone else heard, that the idea didn't capture.
Unless you're a parent that is, has, has either lived those transitions, or is more recently living those transitions, we have done more over the course of the last couple of years to add additional resources, supports for students making those transitions, whether it be the web program, the LEAP program, A to nine, our advisory periods at, yeah, the character education, peer-to-peer supports that we have at the elementary, the eleven, the LEAP program and so forth. So I think we're doing more than we have ever done in the past with respect to helping to support students. So I would hope that, and again, it's possible that, you know, if you're, if you're a parent that doesn't have a student engaged in any of that, or has not had yet a student engaged, they wouldn't yet know that. Not their fault, certainly, but that means it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're sharing a little more about that so that there is a level of comfort knowing that there is support. And I think as we, and as we think about, as we think about, as was mentioned at the last meeting, as we think about the way in which we're seeking to adjust the instructional environment at the middle school and then ultimately at the high school, moving towards more of a smaller learning community, and learning communities in general lend themselves to a more supportive environment where that transition I think is going to be easier for students and so forth. So it's something for us to lean into as well.
Talking about learning communities, especially Smith and Hobie and her friends together, are we thinking of making efforts to let they, just like another example, Troy and all come to Smith and they all go to Paterson, do we make a concerted effort to put them all in one learning community that way they were interacting with each other? Is that good or bad? I don't know. I'm just asking.
I know what I can't educate.
I don't, I don't know that that's feasible necessarily when we think about scheduling, when you think about scheduling a building like that. And, and I, you know, I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that for decades now, students in this district have been making, have been living in these transitions and doing, doing just fine. I mean, Amin is an example of that. She lived through that. And Audrey did too. See, so there's another one there. Turned out okay.
My kids also by choice made those splits. Yeah, they chose to go to Moore's and then they chose from Hill to Baker to IA to, I mean, nobody does that, but still, it turned out okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll gather the remainder of that information. We'll share that with the board. We'll be prepared to share that at the May workshop and then based upon your conversation, proceed at the regular meeting in, in May, if you wish to do so then.
So I did, I did email. I do want to, the one thing I do want to understand in it, one of the first sessions, you know, Nancy brought up, was it, was it, was it her first workshop, I think, of the, of the year? You know, Nancy brought up that we've had some of the numbers presented, right? There is a scenario that at some point, whether, I don't know how many years into the future, that we will have enough middle schools for only three middle schools. That is not out of the realm of possibilities. So I would like to understand, you know, what is the projected time? You know, and I don't know what that would be, you know, would it be assuming seven fifty per school? Could it go a little bit higher? But what is that timeframe when you might really, if we don't do anything, right? If, if we don't increase the number of school of choice students or take some other action, at what point might we be at, at that timeframe? So to understand if we make a decision now, when we, when might we have to make it, you know, the board would have to make a decision against.
Or at least not in, or at least not in a four-year period, right? Like, yeah.
So Rich, my thought was that when Plan Veran kind of brings that we start that budget process and they bring out the solid numbers in terms of what the projection, that would be appropriate time to look at whether or without schools of choice. So that, because I think at, at some point, we need to, and I don't know, even when we surveyed the community now, whether we should bring up that, that topic because we got an opportunity in time to say if it came down, I mean, what's your, what's your preference?
Preference.
Your preference, you know, closing a middle school at this point undisclosed in our name, so we don't know if you're a middle school or not, or, you know, maybe in a school of choice program.
I mean, they're all fair questions.
Right. Are, are the other alternatives to renovate, whether it's to middle school and move that all into the, you know, so preschool comes to elementary schools then?
And you have space.
Yeah. I mean, elementary still needs that because preschoolers will come.
Yeah. But that's not, that, I guarantee, yeah.
At this point, we have no school of choice for a choice and, you know, projections of what those numbers will look like.
Because the other thing is, chances are you're going to close a middle school, you're going to close it out.
You can see there's, I keep imagining that going down by twenty-five.
Yeah.
It's, it's what we're being, what we're thinking about. Like, slightly, I mean, we've heard a lot of changes.
I think that there's a question too about our vulnerability to areas in the context of parenting, what can we do to prevent it from happening? And now we're circling around to that.
Well, closing it as a middle school, but not necessarily closing the building, which is different, right? Because IA East is very old. At some point, you need to renovate that or move those kids somewhere else. So there's a difference between closing a middle school and closing a building.
And I think from a, from a, based on these conversations, and these are fair questions and, and comments to make, and just questions I have in general, that has gone into our thinking in terms of, not only the building at Smith, in terms of the size of that building, but as we look at renovating, bowling, Larson, future-proofing, any renovate, any investment that we make needs to be future-proofed in terms of it being an investment for the community. And so that has been something that's gone into our thinking as well.
But I think it's a fair point to figure out how to communicate that to the community so they don't feel like we're building a building that's not needed. So there's a difference between closing a middle school and closing a building. And I think that's a.
Fifty-four, I think, fifty-two? It was early fifties. Baker. It's been renovated multiple times.
We got its money's worth.
It's got its, our money's worth, I would, for sure.
All right. Good discussion. Anything else on this? Before we go around to any others, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I put a copy of my, as promised, last month, based upon the training that Jordan and his colleague did, and the recognition that I'm supposed to be providing a midterm progress report. They put this together for you. Take a look at it. It's your leisure, but I focused on, at least this go-around, I focused on our three main areas of focus. I focused on the three main areas of focus that I've been working on with our team, and they include budget alignment, our bond programming, and our MTSS alignment and implementation, and provided some key updates for each of those.
So what's, because this is a new process. So is it fair to say, because this, you guys just saw it, we provide input on this, finalize this, and then this goes into your...
However, however you see it most appropriately being utilized.
So have people had a chance to?
No, I just, I just.
So I guess my, let me propose this maybe as a question. If you want to read it and then bring, you know, send feedback back to me, I'll call up that feedback, you know, if it's significant and merits a discussion, then we'll have a discussion. If it's not significant, I'll share that with everyone. You know what, I would say if you could give me, you know, feedback, say within the next week, that'd be good.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. Did you have any other, any other?
No. Only that. Oh, yeah, go around. I just have.
Okay. Audrey, we'll start with you. Any other?
So if there's any credit that's going to be taken or wants to be taken, they're, they're on regular price now until they're made first.
What's the price going to be at?
They're currently ninety-nine, seventy-five.
Twenty-five, expensive place.
So I think as long as you have, have to be registered for that, you can still, like, find that. With that, and then wanted to go back to the level of, of the, of the community that I've talked about a lot, that, talking about how we're shifting, wanted to do that in the next year. I did talk, I had a webinar, a leader webinar, that we've had, and it was very interesting. I learned that a trauma person experiencing a trauma can be a much more traumatic to their children, so even though the child hasn't experienced that trauma themselves, it's a different experience. I'm thinking about the implications for that and what that could do. But then, on the positive side, it gives them that incentive to, even multiple types of traumatic exposure, that if they had proper support, people could actually hear better in terms of having experience trauma with them. So I, I think that I worked at a little more, even in terms of, I think, Rich, we talked about public support, which is really important, and I think, you know, in the data survey, about collecting more data, that's a thing I love to do, that's a part of what I think that my, that my support, I just wanted to say that I would watch that webinar, learn something, keep more on the right track.
I don't have much time for going on that this week, so it's time to do that. On my next week's break, sorry.
Exactly. We have today's community conversation at eight AM.
Eight AM. Get your coffee.
Okay.
But we'll report back to you if I can, if I can.
So many of my questions were already answered, or at least will be. The, and I would just say, so, so next Tuesday morning, we have a community conversation, and then next Tuesday evening, we have the last of the tenants here, you're reducing to, that was at five-thirty again?
At Larson.
At Larson. That's it for me.
Oh, I was going to remind the community conversation, so we already talked about that. I just read a couple things between, and you're something about funding, you know, today, or does that impact us at all, at our schools?
If you're, if you're, yeah, if you're referencing the Essers' monies, it does not impact us. It was mainly districts, twenty-four, I believe, across the state, primarily districts that had already had an agreement in place, and their funding was, was focused on, like HVAC, more building-related upgrades that they were going to do, that they were planning for, so they hadn't spent the money yet, and that was what was clawed back. So, yeah, that, ours has all been spent.
Okay. So there is no, we, we did some money through the county, right? And none of that has any impact?
We got a little bit through the county. The majority of it came straight through the, was funneled through the state. Yeah. So, but we've, we've accounted for all our spending.
Nothing really for me, other than looking forward to the Atlanta trip, especially being a new board member, kind of jumping on every opportunity I can possibly get to work. So I do have a, I don't know, I don't know if you would want to start talking about the I thing, or if you remember that's been vocal, and our last couple meetings, I think we were talking about, about, you know, the language or whatever that means for our district, should we have a conversation about what that's supposed to entail? Is that even part of what we do? You know what I mean? Like, I mean, with U of M, closing some of their offices and stuff, and I feel like.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I, as, as, and I have been, I have, and I probably speak for everyone, but I, I've been asked on a couple occasions by a, by a couple of individuals, how, how our DEI practices in the district are changing. And my response to that is, we're not changing anything because the work we're doing is all work centered around supporting students. This is not, it, my first request of anyone would be, how do you define that? And I think what we typically find is the definitions are vastly different based on what someone believes is occurring versus what, versus what is actually occurring within our, within our schools, which is simply our continued support for students, and students from a variety of backgrounds. We're not going to waver from supporting our students. We're going to continue to provide whatever those supports are. And, I mean, there was reference to classes being taught. There, there's, there's none of that going on. And it's like, I, I find it difficult to respond to anyone who would make a comment like that that's not based in, in fact.
I think, I think it's worthwhile, one, being very clear with the community is saying is, right, we're compliant with the law, and we will, you know, our job is to support our students and protect their rights, and that's what we continue to do, and we will continue to do that with the law.
Yeah.
And, and. This is what it's like, this is what it's like.
Right.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that because that's exactly one of the other things that I said. We, we will always follow the law, and we're compelled to do that. One, as board, it's not responsibility as administrative team, we don't want to follow the law. So we're always going to follow, we're always going to follow that law. Now, we'll, as the potential exists, that laws may, may change, and if that's the case, then we'll adjust accordingly. But until such time as, as that occurs, we'll continue to follow law, support students, make sure that schools are a safe place for, for all students and staff to educate, create the most inclusive environment as we can.
I think it's important for our community to know that, you know, even though there may be some misconceptions about what DEI looks like, as a district, we will always support every single student, no matter what. But like you said, always follow the school even before we are leaving.
And we have had our trainees, our practices relative to, and, and, you know, again, there's a difference between guidance and the law. So we are following the law. I guess the one difference in case twelve versus universities, universities can be coerced into doing things because they get a lot of federal money for research and so on. They're fortunately productive, but they're a little federal. And so the stick can be used to let me take away on money if you don't follow the law versus the law. It's a big, it's a condition unfortunate for, for, fortunate for us, but unfortunate for higher.
And I think our community, purely based on the fact of how diverse it is, is going to be supportive of us, supporting whatever you buy. You know, I, I think that's, I, I, you know, it's part of our job on the board, right? We're, we're here to make sure all our students and staff are supported and protected against. That's it. But, but I, you know, I think when those things get brought up, I think it's very fair for Nancy or for Rich to say, you know, you know, we regularly consult with attorneys on all sorts of issues relating to, to education, and, you know, this is an issue that we continue to do that on, and we are, everything that, you know, we're doing is compliant with the law, and that's it. So that way people don't get this impression that you're in fact somehow violating the law, which we're not. So I think simple statements like that are, and we'll continue to support all of our students and meet their needs.
And what we are doing is making sure that we're able to stay long. And on this we do that learning can happen. And that's the step one for, to make sure that true learning happens. Well, and I, I think that, like, the statement of students, that there are first needs, therefore, you know, if you are going to meet the needs of every, for each student, then you meet that student, you give that, that student the support that they need.
And I think Audrey made that point, you know, really well at the last, at the last meeting, you know, what is equity looks like? It looks like a special needs student getting the supports that they need, and that might mean that they get more support, and they might get more resources than a student who doesn't need that. But that's what equity is, is, is us meeting the needs of our, meeting the needs of our students. So I think some of it is, you know, and I think for a lot of our community members, if you, like, if you, when you say that, they're like, oh, okay, that's my child, you know, in, in all of these different scenarios. So, you know, I, I think we just, chances are that's how it can, you know.
When I've also made it a point to, when I've had an opportunity to speak to individuals that have differences of opinion or concerns, I've made it a point to invite them into a conversation, because they find it much more valuable to sit down with someone and have a face-to-face conversation, usually come to an agreement, we can dispel any misinformation. But, but there are also times where that's not of interest. And so putting that out there as, always as our, our first option, to come together, sit together, have a conversation. And where we've had the chance to do that, we've had great success. There are other situations where that's just not of interest.
I think it's important to note too, if there's something that you ever support us, or us that, you know, like you get into the center of, bringing in, considering their feedback, knowing that those are actual people doing good work, and taking care of our kids on our behalf, you know, at our request, you know. There's ways we can, we can start to best, allow that to be there.
Well, we will need to, you know, check.
That's your power button.
Speaking of all the populations, I'm in Georgia, at a conference, so I think about you. I'm excited to learn about the faculty, and I'd like to listen to the MSU webinar about trauma, the neuroscience thesis. Interesting.
Did they take them for?
I think so, yes. It's available. You have to, I think, register, then if you're interested, you can, or hear it. But it was definitely worth it. I was, I was listening to it, and I thought it was, I mean, they're counselors, because they're the folks, they're our front lines, you know, social workers and counselors to, is this the sort of thing they are applying in their work, that they're doing this, or they're applying this? And they talked about the basis framework and things that are, you know, are, for, for science, and using the study of rat parents, you know, neglecting the child, and you appoint them to this, you bring them along, and they're like, you know, to flourish in these things, which is a really helpful place, and in particular for our community. So, I'm too interested. I'm also going to take up on the classes before the price. I just finished all my level one classes, so none, I think you're done too, yeah?
Yeah.
Actually, maybe we're kind of recording, because we're going to be, teacher nerd. So, yeah, I'm going to get some more of those, and particularly the data class, and there's a special data certification. And then last, for, I was going to also bring up, we're having talks about the A D R C meeting, that people are, I'm going to try to get it out, so people, it's been interesting to listen to the feedback and hear both the feelings, the, the, and, we're just, things you hear a lot, you know, about, this keeps coming up, same concept. So that and the speaking of all the populations, the Troy Act group, which is looking at group of students with special needs, like I P and Bible fours, is having a virtual symposium on April twenty-four. Some of the topics will be executive functioning, literacy, math, Bible four and I P one-on-one, of assistive, of rent communication at home, parent advocacy, university operations.
Can anyone join us?
Yeah. Yep. It's been a teacher's, it's been a tried and fluttered speaking, or last week, but I feel like it was break for break in last course, like, nothing, I can't, you know, so, going back, starting to just scan QR.
Look at Kendra while you say that.
I'll print on those words.
Because naturally, Todd's point about the trauma piece is that if we keep people supported, like parents are supported, and do, they can do their best for their, for support. So just a cool thing, you're available from six to eight on twenty-four. Zoom, so if you'd like to do, listen long, pick a walk, or whatever you're doing. So.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of Housekeeping items. There, there has been, obviously, a lot of conversation, and there's been multiple articles about what will happen with funding at the federal level and so forth. And so Dan provided for, for us, we, we received, just, just in case anybody were to ask, so you, you just, this information, that about four point six million dollars is what we receive this year, is what we're receiving this year from, from federal funding standpoint. So if you look at that as a percentage of our budget, it's only about two and a half percent of our budget. So, albeit it's not a huge percentage, the bulk of that is for IDA. So it's our special education students. It is both the, it's our IDA pass-through, and it's our preschool IDA. So, so E S, E S E C students.
So the title funding is available?
Title funding for us is not very much. We only get about three hundred thousand dollars in title one funding on an annual basis. The second largest amount of monies that we receive are, well, the second largest is adult education, but that's just a pass-through. So whatever, what we get is spent. So, but the second, the second largest impacted group is our, our EL students and our immigrant students. They're the second largest impacted. That's to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars between our EL, our Title Three grant and then our Title Three immigrant grant. So. So I think the takeaway from there is, albeit it's only two point five percent of our budget, it's five, four point six million dollars. That is, if you want to put that in terms of F T E, that's about forty F T E across the school district. Generally, I think a hundred thousand for F T E is to make it very similar. So I think that's good to know, that, that money is important to us. And so we're going to continue obviously to advocate that the resources find their way to us in a reasonable, appropriate manner. April fifteenth, we are planning for site steel signing at the New Smith Middle School. April fifteenth.
What time?
It's going to likely be muddy, so wear your galoshes. Hunter boots. Yeah, it's going to be a mask. Put a good mask. If that's a problem for anyone, just let us know, and we'll see if we can do it.
We'll sign for you. You won't be able to bring it to them yet. Anything for the items?
Please, yeah. Anything else from the group over there? Chris Winters kindergarten roundup, and it's middle of month, isn't it? Yeah, we're, kindergarten roundup is right around the block, corner. Yeah. You want to mention the website update? Thank you. Night.
So I did have a question, so the, for the, now there's links to the athletic websites, but those have not been updated completely. Okay, so that's why they've still remained like the triathletics.org as opposed to being a trike twelve? I have to admit, I thought that they had been changed, because they still look pretty old and dated. So, I mean, I, I just assumed that, that we're, but if they're, I mean, if, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, that's. Yeah, okay, so that makes sense, okay.
So many coaches, so practical, they do leather and things.
Yeah, I think that's what I didn't understand about the athletic websites, because to me, it just still looked the same, so I assumed that it, okay. So is this Thursday, the third?
Can you, I think I emailed back for that, but now I can't remember what I emailed back. Can you guys confirm? Yeah, maybe at least by the end of the speech, just to remind us.
Because I didn't know if that was like a final, you know, that would be like the final date that I would go, so I just, okay.
So I only just heard one I never had was, did we send the information that chariot students gave us? All the lost, did we send that to our attorney, and when might we expect some feedback from them so that we can close the deal with our students?
Okay.
Well, that's all for me. I have one correction. We talked April eighth, it's not April eighth, April ninth, Wednesday, is our community conversation. And April eighth is the A R C, and April ninth is the community. But to add to that, though, our next one is scheduled for May eighth, five PM.
I already said that, I wanted to say that once.
Thursday, May eighth, five PM.
Two or three is fine, so.
Yeah, like nobody else can do it, and it has us.
I don't, my work schedule's not out yet, so I don't think for sure.
So for now, it's the two of you confirmed. I will send that to you, Kendra.
Okay, anything else before we talk this through? All right, thank you, everyone, and we will see you April twenty-second.